Good evening. Welcome to the only 2022 Hoboken Board of Education election debates. I'm Peter Biancomani, host and executive producer of The Pulse with Peter B., North Jersey's highest rated cable access television show. I am delighted and honored to be co-moderating tonight's forum with John Highness, owner and publisher of The Hudson County View, Hudson County's largest independent news website. We would like to thank our sponsors for their help in making tonight's debate happen. El Tavolo di Palazzano at 700 Clinton Street, Madison Pizza Lab located at 152 Newark Street, and Placa Suflaki located at 62 Newark Street. All three are amazing Hoboken eateries that we implore you to visit. We would also like to thank the Hoboken Board of Education for granting us use of the Demeris Auditorium and Sound System tonight. Tonight's debate will consist of 60-second opening and closing statements, one hour of questions from John and I, then 30 minutes of questions from the audience. Candidates will be allowed one 30-second rebuttal per question. Candidates, Haley Zemick from the Pulse team will be keeping time for the evening. When Haley raises the yellow sheet, you will have 10 seconds left. When she raises the red sheet, you are out of time. And then I will start yelling in the mic. Audience, if you would like to ask a question for the audience portion, there are index cards and pens located in the back of the auditorium. Please write your questions down and, once finished, raise your hand in the air, or raise a question in the air, the card in the air. The Lieutenant Commander of The Pulse, Josh Sotomayor-Einstein, will come by and pick up your card. All questions will be screened by John and I, and no questions will be asked that are personal attacks on a specific candidate. Tonight's debate is being livestreamed on the Hudson County View Facebook page, and a 30-minute highlight reel will be aired on next weekend's telecast of The Pulse with Peter B. For full disclosure, both Leadership That Listens and Kids First have taken out ads on Hudson County View and The Pulse. Before we get started, there is a member who couldn't make it tonight, and that's John Madigan, a candidate. He unfortunately was struck with COVID again. He called me, he apologizes that he can't be here, but we wish him a very, very speedy recovery. And before I pass it over to John to get the festivities started, I would also like a moment of silence. The Hoboken District Schools lost one of their own, a teacher at Calabro, and Wallace, Kelly Leone. So if you could just have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. John, take it away.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, everybody. You know, great to see we have a great turnout, and we're glad that seven of the eight candidates were able to make it. Of course, nothing but well wishes for her job. We hope he gets well sued. And of course, for everyone that knew, Ms. Leone, you know, my heart's with you. You know, thoughts, condolences, very obviously tragic situation there. So with that, we're going to get started. Though, before we do, I did just want to shout out The Pulse. They're taking some great video, and the Facebook Live wouldn't be possible without Emma Ha, who is a Montclair State University student working with Hudson County View this semester. So very happy to have her, and very happy to have their help with that. We're going to go clockwise, and we're going to let Ms. Patricia Waiters start off with the intros, and then, from there, we'll have Leslie answer the first question, the next question, Antonio will start, so on and so forth, and obviously, we'll take the rebuttals as they come in. So Pat, feel free to lead us off.
Hi, history has been made tonight, guys. I'm going first. I was prepared to say a speech about not going first. Anyway, Pat Waiters, my opening statement is going to be brief and to the point. I've been running 15 years in this city, long, long, long-time resident. So I'm going to be bringing to you tonight my experience and my specialized knowledge and facts to the board. What I'm going to also bring is, I heard Mr. Peter say attacks. I'm not here to attack. A debate is exactly what it said it is, a debate. I'm here to debate the wrongdoing, I'm here to debate the disrespect, I'm here to debate my candidates, because I know I am the only qualified, experienced one sitting here, and it's time for changing the Hoboken Board of Education. Thank you. Now, hold your applause, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, glad you said that, Pat. Yeah, if you guys could hold your applause till the end, it would let us get through a lot more questions. So if we could do that, that would be great. So Leslie, please.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Norwood, and I have lived in Hoboken almost 25 years. And during that time, I've been a municipal securities lawyer and federal lobbyist in infrastructure and public finance. I'm married with two children and the district school since pre-K3, and they are in first and fourth grades now. Both of my children have learning differences, which has driven me to become an advocate for children's literacy tools and teaching methods, such as the district's teacher training in the Orton-Gillingham method, a multi-sensory way of teaching not only kids having difficulty learning to read, but a beneficial tool to teach all children how to read. I am a longstanding volunteer for a number of community organizations, most notably serving five years on the Board of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, during which the HPEF raised and donated over $1 million to pay for Orton-Gillingham teacher training, the One-on-One Chromebook Initiative that was instrumental for remote learning during the pandemic, Smart Boards in classrooms, field trips, and many other initiatives. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thanks, Leslie. Antonio?
Good evening. First of all, I'm honored to be here and to have the opportunity to participate in this discussion. My name is Antonio Brania. I am running for the Board of Education on Slate 2, I, 3, I, 4, I. A little bit about myself. I have lived in Hoboken for 20 years. I'm married, I have a daughter in the middle school. My daughter has been in the district schools for nine years. As an officer in two PTU organizations, I've actively engaged to bring parents, administrators, and teachers together. I chaired a campaign to bring to light the need for infrastructure investment in our schools. I have also served for eight years on the zoning board, gaining a deep knowledge of Hoboken and an understanding of the application of state laws. I believe the issues we're going to talk about tonight will highlight who has the experience to govern, the pride in our district schools, and who intends to invest or disinvest in these schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex?
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex de la Torre, and I have lived in Hoboken for nearly 16 years. My wife and I are transplants from Southern California, and we have two daughters, a sophomore at Hoboken High School and an eighth grader at Hoboken Middle School. Our kids have been in the Hoboken Public School District since pre-K3. I've witnessed firsthand, as a trustee and as a parent, the tremendous progress in the district, and I want to see that growth continue. Not only have my kids been able to make friends from every walk of life, but they've also been exposed to a variety of programming and curriculum that has given them a well-rounded and invigorating experience. I have proudly served on the BOE since 2018, when I was appointed, and then elected in 2019. Hoboken is a truly special place. Even though we number 60,000, it feels much smaller than that. The strong sense of community and pride is something that makes our city so unique and endearing. I am proud to serve our students and our Hoboken community.
Thank you. Pavel?
Hello, everyone. My name is Pavel Sokolov. I've lived here in Hoboken for a decade now, and I'm excited to start my family with my beautiful fiance. As an immigrant, everything that we have in our family, I owe to the great public education of New Jersey, from our wonderful public high school to Rutgers University, to even the community system at Baruch College. I think that public education is the great equalizer. It lets us fulfill the American dream. But I think we need to recognize that everyone doesn't have the same opportunities, and we need to make sure that we take care of all Hoboken's kids, that everyone is able to succeed and have that American dream. Right now, we're facing a budget shortfall, loss of Corona funding, and a loss of state aid funding. And at the same time, as you know, people are complaining rent is going up 20%. Inflation is at 10%. So we need competent licensed professionals, CPA such as myself, to steer us forward towards a better, brighter tomorrow for all Hoboken students. Thank you.
Thank you, Pavel. Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy Wing, and I'm running for BOE, B-O-E, because I'm grateful for the education I receive. And being on the BOE, BOE is a way for me to give back to our future generations and to our cities. As a mom of three kids in school, I am aware of the opportunities and challenges for children today. Excellent public schools elevate and stabilize communities, because those invested in our schools are here for the long haul and therefore are less transient, less transactional, and are more committed to the city's long-term health and good governance, which benefits us all. I am the only candidate running with a background in gathering community feedback and providing actionable creative solutions. And creative solutions in support of the community are what we are going to need for the infrastructure and budget issues that our district faces. The BOE has an obligation of transparency in bringing back trust in the community, and voting for us, the Kids First slate, will bring us that better, brighter tomorrow.
Thank you. And Donna?
My name is Donna. I'm a parent in the community. I've lived here for six years. I have two small boys who are just starting their academic journey here in Hoboken. I believe a fair and equitable public education is a basic human right. It is the foundation for all our children to reach their potential and go on to excel after they graduate. I believe that serving on the BOE is one of the most noble community service endeavors there is. It's about all of our kids. It's about giving them the very best education that we can. As it stands now, I'm not the only parent that feels that she has raised issues and has not been listened to. This has to change. We must promote an open and inclusive leadership team that encourages input and productive discourse. The BOE must be transparent with the community, or it loses the most important thing it has: trust. I am not a career politician, nor do I wish to be. I am a mother. I raise my hand because I care about giving our students the best educational resources, and I will fight for them should I be elected to serve.
Thank you very much. And now Pete's going to bring us in on the first question, and we'll start with Leslie.
Thank you, John. Candidates, just make sure you speak as close to the mic as possible. You want the audience to hear you, please. As John mentioned this question, we're going to start with Leslie. It's opposite of all the game rates. Like all New Jersey residents, Hobokenites are faced with a high cost of living, including taxes, which they pay directly as homeowners or indirectly as renters. If elected, you will control about one-third of the tax bill. How do you plan on keeping school taxes stable? Leslie, one minute.
Well, the district is required, under legislation S2, to raise taxes to the 2% cap every year, because the state has decided that districts such as Hoboken are under their adequacy cap in terms of local property taxes. But with that being said, it is important that we try to get the most out of every dollar. That is the key to a Board of Trustees members' duty to manage the budget. And I think that we have to continue to examine all of the programs offered to ensure that we're as effective as possible.
Thank you. Antonio?
Same question.
Same question, sir.
So as Leslie mentioned, by law, there's a 2% cap under which the schools can raise taxes. It is important to remember that this is a question about the community where it thinks its investments are most critical. We actually, in Hoboken, have a history at the local tax level of actually not taxing like other communities do. I think last time I checked, it was about 29%. So we have to be cognizant that as a community, when a lot of people make choices about where to live and their investment in public schools, many people actually leave and go to other towns that charge twice the amount of taxes, because they know that investment goes directly into their public schools. So I would argue that relative to many other places, our taxes are relatively low. And as a taxpayer, I am, of course, very sensitive to tax period. Thank you.
Alex?
As the Chair of the Finance Committee, let me please explain what we can and cannot do from a budget/tax perspective. We must raise taxes 2% every year, since we are classified as an S2 district by the state. We cannot cut taxes. We can raise taxes by more than 2% via enrollment and healthcare insurance waivers. We also cannot affect how much dollars go to the charters. Those amounts are determined by the state. Anyone telling you otherwise does not know the facts. The bigger discussion, in my opinion, is about pilots. We, public and charter districts, should be having together a discussion around not only pilots, but state funding. Pilots have a direct impact on facilities, capacity, and money. And sadly, community schools put community schools against each other. Collectively, we can have a bigger impact. If we work together, the results are better.
Thank you. Pavel?
Sure. So I'm actually a tax CPA. I do tax strategy in the city, and for me, budgeting and allocation is something that is very key. First off, I think we need to audit our expenses and audit the budget to get a clear understanding of where our cash flows are going and what the needs really are. I think to resolve some of the constraints that we're facing, we need to partner with the nonprofits that exist in town, with the Hoboken Housing Authority, with City Hall, with Recreation, and see where we can work together, instead of duplicating resources that already exist, to focus on making every dollar count. And at the same time, like I mentioned, we have to be cognizant. You know, inflation, year over year, is 10%. Many people in town are complaining that their rents went up 20%. And then again, bonding $330 million in the middle of a coronavirus pandemic. Is that really wise stewardship of money? Was that really the best plan? Is displacement something that we're not thinking about? I think that we need to address the fact that Hoboken is expensive to live in, and we need to make sure that people stay in Hoboken, not drive them out to the suburbs.
Cindy?
This tax issue is real. And just look to Jersey City to see what's going on when you have a BOE that is not paying attention to keeping costs in check. The city tax bill grew 31.5%, including BOE and city taxes in the last two years in Jersey City. That's something many people cannot afford. What we need to do is audit what's going on, find efficiencies where we can, and also look to the vast resources we have in the city. We have professionals, we have empty nesters, we have people from all walks of life who can give of their talent and time to help fill in in places where we don't have enough support.
Donna?
So it's true, the reality is that we are going to be losing state aid. It will be sunsetting that we've gone through pandemic aid and that inflation is at 10%, losing half a million dollars over the next two years. So I do find it crazy to add a quarter of a billion-dollar high school on top of that. It's just going to continue to drive people out of town. The last thing we want is for Hoboken to be homogenous. We are here because of the diversity, because of the community, because our kids can grow up together from all walks of life. What we need to do is get qualified professionals. You know, Pavel is a CPA, I negotiate contracts. We need to find efficiencies, we need to save costs, and promote the right sizing of the district.
Thank you, Pat.
Did y'all hear me?
Just move closer to the mic.
You can hear me now, 18 and 10. Listen, I told you tonight I'm bringing all straight uncut. Nobody don't want to see their taxes increase. You always just almost kicked in the rear with a brand-new school, and your taxes went up. You hear all of my opponents playing a place to blame. She remind me of me with all the papers all over the place. I can tell you a term, a lawyer, a liar, whatever you want to call it. Anyway, my thing is, when she said the 2% tax, that's exactly right. The Board of Ed also found a way to get around that. I have been to every meeting, y'all talking to a tax, oh, I mean, I'm sorry, a budget hall here. People find a way around things, and the first thing they did was blame the government. Well, the government said we have to do this. No, we have to get rid of the local greedy politicians that find a way through things. The school was one way, and they was behind closed doors. They need to be more transparent, put the budget back in the voters' hands, and let us vote on our own budget and not the administration, and we can see where our money is. I'm willing to work it, okay? Because I've seen greed, and that's where our taxes is being impacted. So, I mean, they may have these blue eyes, but tonight, all right, we got to have some of them. But tonight, stop mismanaging our money, and we will control the tax issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any rebuttals? Just raise your hand. We'll start with Leslie.
I will point out, I will point out that the district, of course, does have an audit every year, and that the Finance Committee does scrub the expenses every year. Our CUSAC scores for management of the district are as high as they've ever been. We do already partner with nonprofits in the community, including the new Stevens University tutoring program. So much of what is being discussed here by Pavel has already been implemented.
Any other rebuttals?
I'm rebutting that.
Pat, raise your hand first.
No, because I'm...
30 seconds, Pat.
I'm sorry. I'm rebutting that, because when you say non-for-profit, you leaving room for no diversity. You leaving room for a lot of problems. You keep saying proudly about the non-for-profit dumping tons of money, but it's not going in the right hands. Our kids can't go to the programs. It only affects, protect a certain few. So I'm not interested in no non-for-profit. I'm giving y'all the truth. That's all ours.
And Pavel?
Yeah, so actually, I read the audits. Interestingly enough, the way enrollment figures are calculated, the way facility space is calculated, basically gets materially restated almost every year and every time we switch auditors. There's no consistency, and I think that's something we need to actually address, the fact that year to year, the numbers are manipulated based on whatever narrative there wants to be. And yeah, it's great that we're partnering with nonprofits. We should do more community lifestyle, mentor, folks, keep that which going, and give the nonprofits the stability they need so our kids are supported year-round. Thank you.
Any other rebuttals? Seeing done, we're going to move on to the next question. I'm going to pass it back over to John, and I believe Antonio is going to be first with this question.
Yes, that's right. We're going to start with Antonio. So, the January referendum to Bob for a $241 million new high school created a division in the Hoboken community for people who care about children and taxpayers on both sides. How would you help to heal that rift and come up with a plan that works for all stakeholders?
Thank you for the question. So yes, that is true, and we had a referendum, and the voters spoke, and that is now a matter that is quite behind us. What we need to do is have a very open and transparent conversation with the community so they understand the concept of supply and demand. We have had a 27% increase in our schools in the past eight years. That is demand. That is families who want to stay, that is families who like the schools that they're in and want to participate. However, they're also doing so in infrastructure that has not been updated in at least 50 years. All of our facilities are 50 to 115 years old. We have the challenge of bringing this, all of this programming and the increase in students to infrastructure that is aging and requires investment and expansion. That would be a conversation that the Board of Ed has already started, and we will need to continue in an open way with the community.
Thank you. Alex?
I believe then, and continue to believe now, the need for long-term facility investment. It is real. There is tremendous pressure at the elementary school and at the Hoboken Middle School due to our growing enrollment. Where are we going to put the kids? They deserve modern facilities, they need space. For our district to address any investment of the size and magnitude that was proposed, it behooves us to keep all constituents informed and educated. Educated not only of the ask, but also of the need. The community spoke loud and clear. They voted, and we were defeated 2 to 1. We need to do more, I need to do more to educate and engage with the entire community. And we've already started that. Dr. Johnson held 14 community roundtables since the referendum discussing the budget, enrollment, facilities, amongst other things. And that's just the beginning. But let me be clear, there is no plan to put out another referendum without any community input.
Thank you. Pavel?
Right. So as you may know, I was one of the leaders of Vote No. And to be honest, I agree, there are capacity needs, there are facility needs. And what really disappoints me is that, I have in good consciousness, couldn't be a vote yes supporter, because process matters, integrity matters. When we teach our children not to lie, cheat, or steal, we teach them that it's important how you get the results. Look, everyone knew that they purposely withheld this. Key crucial vote is key information from the November general election. Why, we can only speculate. But then announcing it during the pandemic surge, during the holiday season, and giving us only six weeks to deliberate? That's not how you build trust. That's not how you get community engagement. That's how you basically disenfranchise and suppress the vote. And we see this all around, you know? Process matters. We need to have an informed community, and we need to do this together. We need new leaders who have proven they can mobilize the community together.
Okay. Cindy?
The community is going to be very important to anything we do. We do have real infrastructure needs, we have aging infrastructure, particularly at Demeris. That is the fulcrum for everything we need to do, fanning on out. We also need to improve academic outcomes for all types of learners. I have the skill set to help with that. I know how to go out into communities and to elicit feedback from them. Again, most of the people who live in this community are not parents. So in order to get a push for something big and real, we need the entire community behind that. And that also means explaining what we're doing and why, and also what alternatives we've considered and why we haven't gone with those alternatives. Just being transparent and telling people what you're doing, instead of doing things in secret, goes such a long way to engender trust.
Thank you. Donna?
I would say that we're not blind to the fact that we definitely need serious upgrades in our school. We need to update our facilities. We need to be ready for 2022 and beyond in terms of athletic facilities and all of our burgeoning sport offering. But when we talk about enrollment, when you look at the DOE, which is a state authority, and you look at enrollment numbers, the numbers are not trending upwards, they're trending downwards. At best, they're comparatively stable. So if anything, this gives us the opportunity to come back to the table, to talk together, to figure out and weigh situations on how we can move forward together as a community. That doesn't mean we don't want enrollment and continuity in our schools to increase, but it does mean we have more time to assess where these investments go. The leapfrogging could be the right choice for, you know, going from the elementary to the middle to the high school, and actually building a new high school. But it doesn't, it's an over-engineered way to address the problem. We need to focus on academics and our students.
Thank you. Pat?
Shout out to the new bathrooms in Demeris, guys. I said, let's do the schools that we already have, let's renovate those schools, because there's a lot of, what I could say, wear and tear that's beyond repair. But I would still say, this whole referendum thing is another school and another plan waiting. But don't be surprised either, come November 9th. If you look at the endorsement, and we look at social media, and see the mayor and this whole clique, this whole little clique right here, there's a push in it, "Oh, we gonna be sorry, put the referendum behind us." You can't trust a liar. You gotta earn faith, you gotta earn trust, you gotta earn it back. There's no way we gotta incumbent sitting on the stage tonight and bow enough to run again, because they can. When you have that much power and control, stop letting them go over these little trinkets up here on the stage to distract you, guys. It's all dirty politics. That's why I said I voted no, I voted yes. I didn't vote neither one. I waited till Election Day, stood on City Hall stairs at 6:00 in the morning and said, "I vote hell no." Because it's all, it was all a deal for the big-money bad politicians. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Pat, Leslie?
I voted yes because of the dire need for capital improvements to school facilities and the fact that the last successful school bond referendum in town was back in 1989. I was surprised and disappointed that a referendum was announced after the last November elections, especially due to the cost of project and the short amount of time until the vote. The referendum process was insufficient. I believe the BOE should do a much better job engaging the community all along and being transparent in the process. My business is all about full disclosure and not omitting any material facts. Community input should be sought on any significant capital project through a variety of meaningful ways before the project is finalized, including stakeholder meetings, surveys, and focus groups. But the reality exists that the district serves over 3,000 students that have increased almost 27% over the past eight years. Space issues and decades of deferred maintenance in all buildings will need to be addressed, and we can focus on academics and facilities at the same time.
Thank you, Leslie. So I imagine we got a couple rebuttals out there. Pat, please feel free.
Raise your hand, Ashana. She sat in those chairs in the 80s. She said the school district was in dying need. Why was it good enough for our kids to go there? And now, all of a sudden, you want a brand-new school? I raised six in the school district, guys, and I'm telling you, I seen a little bit of renovation they did during the summer here in Demeris. It was good enough for this new big high-tech school that was supposed to be coming in? I'm telling you, take that money. If the politics wasn't involved, I would say yes. Don't get the impression that I don't want the best for our children, because I do. I don't want the dirty politics and pat in a politician's pocket. So you gotta get ready for pay-to-play. All right, sorry, this one gotta pay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is there any further rebuttals?
You know, I'm not enough time to really vent. Go ahead.
We got, it's a long debate, Pat, you'll be all right. Does anyone else, yes, please, Antonio?[1731.78]
Yeah, just to make a broad comment here, everyone has agreed about the need for transparency. Some people may have been against the referendum, some people may have not had enough time. But let us not go to disparaging the board's intent and people's intent. The purpose of bringing that referendum to the table when it was, was to try to make an investment at the lowest possible cost for the taxpayers of Hoboken. Those interest rates have since risen, it was to attempt to get within that window. That is not malintent, that's trying to benefit the city.
Anything further?
No applause, please.
Yeah, if you could hold your applause. Pavel, yes?
Yeah, like I said, I'm not trying to speculate anything, I just think generally, when you have a great idea, you're gonna tell everybody about it. When I'm proud of something, I do my part that everybody knows. And yet, if it's something that I don't think is good or I'm ashamed of, probably gonna try to downplay it. You know, if it tracks, it tracks. And I think regardless of how you voted, the Vote No team did get the word out and let everyone in town know, the Vote Yes team did not.
Anything further?
I will just say this, over the last 16 years that I've been here, there have been a lot of Band-Aids to fix the infrastructure for our kids' education. Band-Aids are not the answer. It is time, as a community, to invest in an integral part of that fabric. Again, Band-Aids are not a fix, they are just temporary.
All right, we good to go? All right, back to Peter.
Thank you. And we're gonna start with Mr. Delatorre with his next question. Since 2012, the Hoboken BOE has not taken its budget to a public referendum, and the public has seen an increase in their school taxes almost every year since. If elected, will you support holding referendums on Board of Education budgets? Why or why not? And do you have any other ideas to increase public participation on the budget? Alex, one minute.
Sure. You know, we meet as a board first Tuesday of every month. The public has the opportunity to come in and express their feelings and thoughts regarding to all our budgets. Our budgets are made public, we get audited every year, our results are posted, we have increased our scores from a Q-SAC perspective, we have definitely a need to do better. There is no doubt about that. We can, and we have, over the last two years, our budgets have gone up the 2% that the state has mandated, and we have done just that, not one penny more, not one penny less. Previous to that, a 10% increase was because of an enrollment and healthcare waiver. So, we have done our best to ensure that we are fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of this community.
Pavel?
Right, so, I think fundamentally, we need to stress the importance of how much exactly our school budget affects the community. It's roughly a third, and yet, I think I was one of maybe four people who came to the budget meeting here and actually saw the presentation from the school business administrator. I think people are very aware that there is financial and dire need, and yet they're not aware of where they can go with this information. I think we need really publicize and let people know, this is happening, this is real, the coronavirus grant money that we used to plug this year's budget, which I asked about, is gone, another half million of state aid under this administration is gone. We need to let the people know that their voices matter, that their opinions matter, and that what this Board of Ed decides oftentimes is the difference between how much you can buy groceries and if you can afford rent. It's very important that the public is made aware and that the Board of Ed does its due diligence and makes the effort to make the public aware.
Thank you.
The more sunlight around our budget, the better. The more people know what is in the budget and why, the better. The more people who are educated, the better. The BOE is here to educate our children, but they're also here, part of their remit is responsibility to the taxpayers, so of course we want to do that. Now, the way I understand it is if we go past the 2% cap, then it does have to go to a referendum. So, hopefully that will not be the case, that we have to go past the 2% cap, and that we will, as BOE trustees, be more transparent about what is in the budget, so everybody in the city can feel comfortable with where their tax money is going.
It's a reality that we are losing state aid year over year, that we are gonna be phasing out half a million dollars over the next two years, and that we need to close budget gaps. The way to do that is to be transparent with the community. We have a duty of care to our students, we have a duty of care to the taxpayer. We must care for everyone in this community and take into account everyone's socioeconomic background. Again, doing that is bringing professionals to the board, getting more community involvement, being outspoken, being transparent, being inclusive, and being mindful of the community needs.
Thank you. Pat?
Speaking of community involvement, I'm maintaining that idea. I said tonight that I was gonna be nice, but I'm being disrespected, and I'm gonna say this nicely, and this the first time I've ever seen a debate, and I told you, Mr. Heinz, you know that, I approached you when I first came in the room, I'm not gonna let you guys sit up here and disrespect me with respect to, he said no clapping, y'all clapped anyway. Back in the days, y'all was waiting for Patricia Waiters to come up here and act as such, but I'm not. I'm gonna say it nicely, grow up. Because see, you want me to come out of character, I can, but I refuse to, because I said I'm here to serve everybody, and that's what I mean. I will serve everybody in Hoboken, and like I said earlier, put the budget back in the people's hands, let us decide. Because you see what happens when politics run things, people walk on eggshells and scared to lose their job. I don't take intimidation and threats lightly, okay? I fear nobody, and I'm my own person. I said bring the budget back to us and give it to us, let them tell you whatever they want to tell you guys, but it's being manipulated and controlled by a greedy administration. So, y'all get into our lives, but thank you anyway. And feel free to clap, my family.
All right, hold your applause, hold your applause. Thank you, Pat, thank you.
I think it's clear the district will continue to need to budget to the cap for the foreseeable future to meet the school board's financial obligations when it comes to meeting students' needs. Rising costs and inflation are gonna create additional challenges when the same goods and services cost more money. It's gonna have a significant impact on the budget and therefore programming and services that the district can offer. We will need to manage through this while considering the taxpayers are also feeling their own budgetary pinch. The reality is, old buildings are costly to heat and maintain, the cost of all supplies is rising, and the teacher contract needs to be renegotiated this year. I think one way to bring the community into the budgeting process is to make the meetings more transparent by live streaming the BOE meetings like we did during COVID. Also, I believe all interim financials monthly should be posted to the website so community members can take a look at this current status of budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio, I think I turned it over to rebuttals. Antonio?
So, in addition to what Mr. Norwood just said, we have run on our slate that we believe in transparency, and that includes not only posting financials, but also the live streaming of meetings. But there is another element here. You are evaluating us to represent you in terms of the district, and that means that you are guaranteeing a group of people to go and look and professionally look, and as Mr. Delatorre said, audit our budget. Everyone here has the opportunity, it's the first Tuesday of every month, to come, to speak to the board, to ask questions of the board, and to look at the agenda regarding the financials. One area where I'm going to agree with Ms. Waiters is that we still have S2 students in this district, and we have a responsibility to all the kids. We have West Side kids and East Side kids, some kids don't even have money for all the food they need at the end of the month. We even have homeless families in our district that we must care for. Yes, we will have to honor the 2% cap.
Thank you. We're gonna begin with rebuttals, I see Pat.
This sounds good coming from a millionaire, guys, but all of us who live in Hoboken are not millionaires, okay, number one. And number two, when you say think about all the kids, think about all the kids. I don't wanna hear the word audit no more, because when somebody ordered you, they still gotta take the stats from our administrator to say, I brought this, I brought two cookies, I brought three tablets. You still, somebody is still writing that down for the order. If you're a liar, you could put anything and say your numbers is this, the stats is this, so keep that in mind too. They're quick to say an order, we had to get Judy Tripoli in here, you remember, Mr. Councilman? So, I'm wrapping it up. An order is not always the answer.
Let's go.
The duty of a BOE trustee is to represent the taxpayers, but to advocate for students at the district. Pavel has talked a lot about making sure that taxes are as low as possible for Hoboken residents. However, he actively supported a gubernatorial candidate that advocated for drastically reducing state aid specifically to school districts like Hoboken, which would have significantly increased local property taxes. I think that's important to know.
Any other rebuttals? Pavel's gonna run up first, please.
Please.
No applause, no applause, no applause. Thank you. Pavel?
Yeah, so, the current administration is cutting the funding, as we pointed out, but more realistically, taxes are a value proposition. When you tell people that you're gonna be paying teachers more salary, more supplies, more programs, no one has an issue paying taxes. But when you try to fleece them for $330 million so certain Board of Ed members can have their kids play ice hockey in Hoboken, well, that's the problem.
Alex, you're next.
Guys, come on, no applause. I just wanna say, yes, we can raise taxes by more than 2% without a referendum, and we can do that via enrollment and healthcare waivers, just like we did in 1920 by 5.4% and in 2021 by 10%.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Well, you already went, Pat, you can save it for the, you'll get one rebuttal. Correct. You can save it for your answer in the beginning of the next question. Any other rebuttals for this question? No? All right, I'm gonna pass it back on to John. So, obviously, that was a multifaceted question, but I didn't get a definitive answer from some of the candidates, so we're just gonna go left to right, starting with Pat. Would you support putting the budget back to referendum? Yes or no?
No, I'm not gonna put it back in the people's hands, so we will.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay.
That is my final, I could say something else?
No, that's it. Yes or no?
I don't believe every budget should need to go to referendum, but if the budget exceeds the 2% cap without a waiver, it's legally required to go to a referendum.
Okay. Antonio?
I do not believe that every budget needs to be to referendum. I do think that budgets need to be absolutely transparent to the public, and if it exceeds that amount, then yes, it should be brought to referendum.
All right, thank you.
I do not believe every budget should go to a referendum.
Thank you. Pavel?
Agreed. I also do not believe that every budget should go to referendum.
Okay. Cindy?
I believe within the 2% cap, it's not necessarily necessary, if it's above the 2% cap, as we understand is legally required, but of course, it should go to a referendum. And also, there should be a mechanism in place.
Let's go, just agree, give it to me. Thank you. Donna?
No, I do not believe that every budget should go to a referendum above the 2% cap.
Thank you. No, no, that's it, we're moving on to another topic. Thank you very much for clarifying, ladies and gentlemen. So, we're gonna move on to the next topic. So, at this time, we're gonna start with Pavel. The relationship between the charter schools and public schools has been fractured in recent memory. While the public schools aren't expected to fund the charters or vice versa, do you have any plans to try to collaborate them during your three-year term if elected?
Right, so there's a lot of division and animosity right now between the current Board of Ed and the charters. Basically, every time I asked about the budget, their response was, oh, the charter costs go up, so any complaints you have, go to the charters. I think there's a lot of room for collaboration, you know, learning best practices, professional development, athletics, for example. Right now, students at Hoboken Charter School cannot play sports at Hoboken High, even though county prep and high tech can. I think a lot of this divisiveness just comes from the personalities on the board, really. We're all Hoboken residents, we're all Hoboken students, and the idea is that we wanna put all Hoboken's kids first for brighter, better tomorrow. Now, let's end up politics and focus on the kids.
Thank you. Cindy?
Full disclosure, my kids do go to a charter school, so I am obviously supportive of charter schools, but as a BOE trustee, my number one goal would be to make our public, our BOE schools the best they could be, because I see our array of schools like a shopping mall. We want the best anchor store possible, that's our BOE school. But there's also room in the mall for all the other stores, which are all our other educational options. How lucky are we that we have so many choices here? Of course, let's collaborate as much as possible, let's have a one-Hoboken mindset, it comes from the top down.
Thank you. Donna?
Again, this is really about collaboration and being one-Hoboken, promoting that oneness within all of our schools. Public charter students are just that, they are public school students. The high tech and county prep can play Hoboken High School football, but charter kids cannot. In Jersey City, the city picks up the tab for after-school activities. There has to be a way in which that we all live together, all these children grow up together, and then ultimately, the goal is to get them over that finish line, get to that high school, so that all the kids can end up and filter there. So, again, this is really about sharing facilities, finding ways in which we can work together and bring the students together, because they want to grow up together, finish the school through 12th grade.
Great, thank you. Pat?
Oh, my God, look how quick this, the tune change of the song. We had a meet and greet with the charter school, a shout out to all of you parents that showed up, I give all of you big respect. And all of my opponents there at the meeting, we talked about inclusiveness and diversity. All of them spoke about, and now today, they'd do anything to get anybody's attention to get a vote. They made a vow to the charter school, and now today, everybody, public school and anti-charter school. Listen, we shouldn't even be there with the charter school versus the public school. The charter school is a public school. They deserve the same respect and the same duty-free education like the public school. They got the charter school fighting the public school, and all of this animosity going in our city is disgusting. Our kids still gonna be impacted at the end of the day when they go to the park, when they shopping with their parents in shop, right? So, I'm really sick and tired of all of the stuff with the charter school versus the public school, and the fighting, and the no diversity inclusion, and everybody playing a place to blame. Put your money where your mouth is. I'm for the charter school, yes.
Thanks, Pat. Leslie?
Parents can make a variety of educational choices in Hoboken amongst four public school districts, one traditional and three charter schools. And the funding follows the child. I do need to dispel some misinformation that the BOE trustees do not have oversight over the budget, curriculum, policies, or chief administrators of any of the charter schools, and the BOE trustees cannot direct the district business administrator to pay any more or less to each charter school than has been directed to pay by Trenton. And that's just the current state of law. If elected, me and my slate mates pledge to do three things. Because the charter schools are part of the fabric of our community, we will never vote to revoke or not renew the charter of an existing Hoboken charter school. School funding in New Jersey is complicated and insufficient. People wanna go to Trenton to get more money for all public schools, we will be there with you. And third, Hoboken has undergone an incredible amount of redevelopment. If you wanna lobby the city to ensure there's proper space allocation and taxation for public infrastructure like school facilities of any kind in an upcoming redevelopment plan, we'll be there with you, shoulder to shoulder.
Very good. Antonio? Hold your applause, hold your applause.
School choice is a wonderful feature of Hoboken, and I too am sorry for all the back and forth that seems to go on between charter schools and district schools. It's unfortunate, because I know many, 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 many families in this town, and many of those families are in charter schools and very happy with the choice they have made. But I have to say, I do sometimes feel like right now on this stage, that there may be some folks here that don't understand the role that they're trying to be elected to. These are four different school districts, they have four different boards, they are managed from different parts of Trenton, and their funding mechanism is controlled from Trenton. Should we collaborate? Absolutely. Should we work together? Absolutely. But please understand that if you're elected to be a trustee, you have a fiduciary responsibility to that district, that is what you're being elected for. I'm not sure everybody on this stage has a clear understanding of that.
All right. Please. Alex?
We are lucky that as parents, we have so many choices when it comes to the education of our children. We have all selected schools that fit our needs and desires as families. I in no way plan to decrease those choices for anyone. We live in a community where our children interact with each other in a variety of ways, outside of school, and have formed friendships through those pursuits. As a parent, as a trustee, and as a taxpayer, I look forward to working together with the charters and collaborating wherever possible for the benefit of all our children. We all know that education in our state is woefully underfunded, and I look forward to working with any charter school to lobby our state officials for more funding.
Thank you. Any rebuttals up here? Yes, Pat?
I am well aware, my opponents said I'm not aware, of the charter school situation versus the public school. I noticed tonight she quick to keep talking about what legislation says. We have a very unethical mayor and this whole clique here that follows these rules and don't only ethically mean. I was one of the strong supporters for the Da Vinci charter school, when we start noticing the population grown with our children, and the public school was there to fight that hand in hand. So, when they painting this pretty picture like everybody get along, they don't. There's money in City Hall right now, okay, the pilot money that they fighting over. So, she just contradicted herself saying, oh, we want the same as the public school and the charter school.
It's just an extraneous credulity that anyone here does not know that they're running for Board of Education, for Hoboken Board of Education schools. I think we've all passed that smell test. Also, one thing I wanna point out is that charter schools find their own facilities. So, they're doing, they're paying through their money that they get from the state to get those facilities. If those charters were to go away, where would we put these children given our space crunch?
All right, Eddie? Please, come on. Hey, come on. We're not, we're not yelling out, we're not yelling out, please. Hey, come on, guys, take it easy, take it easy, take it easy. Take it easy, no yelling out, no yelling out, no yelling out. So, do we have any rebuttal on the stage? Yes, Antonio?
As Ms. Norwood just stated, the position of our slate is we would never move to have an opinion to revoke any charter of an existing charter school. They are chartering about a third of our children in this district, and we're absolutely right. We need them.
Okay. Anything further on this topic? All right, back to you, Pete.
Thank you. We're gonna have one more moderator question, and we're gonna move to audience questions. So, this is the last. Uh, you're gonna submit them right to Josh, he's, he's wearing the hat. So, this is your last call to submit your questions to Josh. All right, the next question, we're gonna start with Cindy. What, if any, is your political affiliation? And how does that influence your point of view on the Board of Education? Cindy, one minute.
Well, I am actually unaffiliated, so my point of view is that great ideas can come from anywhere and terrible ideas can come from anywhere. And the things that matter are the qualities of the person that you are and that you are trying to prepare all our learners for the future. You are either for transparency or you are not. You are either for integrity or you are not. You are either for good governance or you are not. You are either open to feedback or you are not. These qualities are all nonpartisan, and when it came to the referendum, that was also a resounding no to press hall party line.
Thank you. Donna?
I too am unaffiliated. I think party affiliation has zero place in a Board of Ed race. We all received sample ballots in the mail. There was no R or D next to any of our names. That's because party affiliation has nothing to do with Board of Ed race. What I do believe is that our country and this town is horrifyingly divided on the national, on the national and local level. We need to have open, honest, and respectful public discourse. People are allowed to have different opinions. People can live in harmony regardless. Everyone should vote for people over party.
Pat, please.
What, if any, is your political affiliation? And how does that influence your point of view on the Board of Education?
First of all, I'm not a political person. I'm a people person. And second of all, I want you guys to wake up, I'm gonna keep saying this. Lawyers and liars is not who we need on our Board of Education, okay? We do not need the same old stuff. You see just tonight alone, the fight almost took place. We don't need our, our city fighting and our community fighting. I am running for the Board of Ed, 'cause people that look like me need representation, okay? I'm tired of the intercepting, not, not appointing me when it was availability for me to be appointed. I don't think this Board of Education should be about politics, and it is. Most of these people is here for a stepping stone into the political arena. But politics is getting dirty in Hoboken, guys. And we don't need no fights, we don't need no civil war, and that's where we headed. And you see tonight, all the little educated people that used to be educated, y'all out of order and y'all disrespectful, okay? So, if y'all wanna bring war into Hoboken, keep on playing dirty politics, and it's gonna backfire. I'm not a politician.
Hey, take it easy, take it easy.
Thank you. Leslie?
I am a lifelong Democrat, but I've never served in a committee leadership role or been a politician. The New Jersey School Board Association has cleared that school boards need to be nonpartisan, and we're not bringing culture wars to schools. We have to focus on the needs of schools and the students. We believe it's about values. We believe in science. I'm not a doctor. I listen to doctors and public health officials. I applaud Dr. Johnson for being a leader that allowed parents' options during the pandemic to allow our students to be in-person more than any other district in New Jersey. She was really a visionary and did an excellent job in following state and public health standards to ensure our students, teachers, and staff could be in school as safely as possible. I believe in dirt, diversity, and inclusion. I believe these are principles that are important to teach our children at a very young age. I believe in health standards and following the law of the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Antonio?
I'm a registered Democrat, which has absolutely no bearing on this election. This is supposed to be a nonpartisan election. As Ms. Norwood stated, we believe in facts, we believe in science, and we believe in an administration that has been able to guide us through very difficult, challenging times with related to pandemics and keep all of our schools open. I will say, however, that unfortunately, we do have an opposition slate that has stated a number of other opinions that we think are extreme and concern us. I have been accused of mudslinging. I'm not a mudslinger, but I do believe in transparency. With no mudslinging, we publish facts. And the facts are, there are opinions here that are of an extreme position and are endorsed by organizations that also harbor those same extreme opinions. That is very much of a concern to me. It's not about D or R.
Thank you. Alex?
This election is supposed to be about the educational welfare of all our children, first and foremost. Political affiliation has no place in this election. I believe in transparency, science, and investing in our schools. This is what I care about. I believe that Hoboken's education state aid should not be cut. I believe that we should follow state laws. I believe that our community, community follows state and local health officials. I appreciate the diversity of thought each candidate up here brings to the table. I care too much about our kids to let that go unchecked. This is not about you as a person. This is about the values that you want to impress upon the education of our children.
Thank you. Pablo?
Right, so, I agree. I don't think personal politics should play a role, especially in governance at the local level. I myself am a Republican, probably because my parents grew up under communist rule. That being said, I distinctly remember going to Trenton and Washington as Rutgers Student Body President to bring back money for higher education and low-income students. I distinctly remember passing legislation to help trans and LGBTQ youth be more accepted at Rutgers University. I distinctly remember during the referendum advocating for education, voter transparency, fighting against voter suppression tactics, longer run races. Things that Democrats claim that they're all about, they threw out for their own political gains. I had to educate people what it means to be an involved voter. I, I bring, why are we bringing politics into this? When you have no platform, all you can do is bring up national politics to try to cover yourself. But at the end of the day, the voters in Hoboken know. They see through this, because they know what's good for our town, and that's putting the kids first.
Any rebuttals? Pat, wait a second.
I wanna give a shout out to the housing authority and my family over there that did find a way here. We do care, believe me, guys. This is huge to see this, to see them come out, 'cause they count. I don't want them to fear retaliation, nothing but not happen to our kids in school tomorrow, and, and the list goes on. It sounds good, again, to hear diversity, and then I see actions speak differently. Oh, my God, you definitely going a little too fast, because maybe if I slow down, then that yellow card will go up. Anyway, with that being said, I wanna rebuttal what he's saying about diversity, inclusion, and they so concerned. Let it happen. Stop saying it with your mouth. Let me see it in the districts, okay? Especially Mr. Delatorre, that changed while it's around forever. Let me go to these schools and let our kids be, all right, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Any other, okay, it's fine. Thank you, it's 30 seconds, correct.
Yes, so check them.
Uh, any other rebuttals? Thank you, Antonio?
So, let's rebut to Mr. Sokoloff. We started this campaign with an absolute foundation in transparency. We set up our website weeks ago and made very clear what our platform was, what our plank's on, what we would stand for. We have gone to every press interview that has been requested of us. We have responded to every press request. We have not heard anything about these issues from the other side. We are still waiting.
Any other rebutt- Leslie?
In terms of this being a nonpartisan election, I'm proud to say I've got two Brent Moms running our campaign, Megan Dodd and Tammy Pang. We are a community-based effort to try to make sure that we have representation on the Board of Education. I was disappointed to see that Mr. Sokoloff has not resigned his position as Secretary of the Republican Party of Hoboken, and his campaign manager is the Chair of the Republican Party in Hoboken. I believe that that position of Secretary needs to be resigned.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Pablo?
Sure, so, I'm glad we know now who our campaign managers are, as they were not on the ELEC files. And you know what? I think I might consider resigning. We have a few council people present who are members of the Hoboken Democratic Committee, and I think if we can all agree, let's all resign, yeah.
Anybody else? No applause, please. Thanks. All right, seeing no other rebuttals, we are going to move on to audience questions, and we're gonna try to get through as many as possible. There has been a lot. And we're gonna, I'm gonna pass it over to John. Yeah, just real quick, wanted to just say thank you for having an engaged audience tonight. I mean, we got probably over 50 questions here. We're not even gonna get through a quarter of that, but we do appreciate your feedback. And with that, I don't wanna waste any more time. Let's start with just a quick yes/no. We'll start with Donna. Do you intend to run for future office if you win this election? Higher office if you win this election?
Absolutely not.
Go ahead, Pat. Yes or no?
Yes, I'm gonna run every time. Yes, I'm running for future office.
Higher office, though, like?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll run for president tomorrow.
I, I will, I will never run for higher office.
Okay.
I have no plans to run for higher office.
Okay.
No plans to run for higher office.
All right.
Sadly, as an immigrant, I cannot be president, but in general, no, no plans.
Okay. Go ahead, Cindy.
How, um, no, if, if you miss your opportunity with me this time, I plan to go into retirement from all.
All right, if you don't mind, we're just gonna do a now more, you know, in-depth question. So, I thought this one was pretty interesting, and we'll go back to the beginning. We'll start with Pat again. Could you speak to your specific views as to age-appropriate education with regards to gender, sex, LGBTQ plus issues? And this particular person in the audience, they're speaking from personal experience as their child was just identified as transgender within the last two weeks. The average age for children to realize this is eight years. So, I thought a pretty thoughtful question, and again, we'll start with Pat.
I feel really bad with that, because I try my best to make people comfortable. I mean, and they skin revolves to what their preference is. I mean, that's kinda hard for me, because the only thing I can really offer is to make the individual feel comfortable, the same way I feel about special needs and other situations with people faced with things like that. My daughter had an experience, you know, working with somebody like that, and I told her the same thing. Try to refrain from your personal opinion and just try to make the person feel as comfortable as possible, so. That's it.
Okay. Leslie?
I support the new legislative requirements of the 2019 history and contributions of individuals with disabilities and LGBT and diversity and inclusion statutes. All students deserve equitable access to high-quality education that is inclusive and reflective of the rich diversity of our state. Consideration of diverse histories, experiences, and perspectives that promote dignity and respect of all individuals is important and can and should be integrated into other lessons. I believe Dr. Johnson has taken a very appropriate role in adopting these new legislative requirements, and I applaud her efforts to do so.
Thank you very much. Antonio?
I 100% think the question was age-appropriate education, yes?
That's right.
100% believe in age-appropriate education. I'll speak somewhat from a personal space. I have many LGBTQ members of my extended family, friends, immediate family, and when we don't do this, we teach those children that they may not have a full place in society, and I reject that. Those are not my values. That is number one. Number two is, this is common sense. You know, my child is in the middle school. They're out in the parks every day. They're out talking to each other. They are talking about these things. So, do you want them to do that in an uneducated fashion? Or do you want them to gain the systems of trained professionals that will help them understand what these differences are? Yes, I support.
Thank you. Alex?
I fully support age-appropriate education. I think it's important for our, our kids to come to school, right, to feel comfortable with who they are as people. I wanna make sure that diversity and inclusivity is paramount here at our schools. There is no place for miseducated or bigotry in the hallways of our schools. It is not who we are as a community, it is not who we are as parents, and we should be embracing the different types of ethnicities, sexual orientations, and social status of every student here in Hoboken.
Thank you, trustee. Pablo?
Right, like I mentioned, back at Rutgers University, I actually passed LGBTQ-friendly legislation so that especially trans students would be able to use their real names and not their dead names on their rosters, so they're not accidentally out of their professors. I think hate and bigotry has no place. It's awful. I can't even begin to imagine how difficult it is for a young child to be dealing with these feelings. And we have to do everything we can to support them, to know that they're welcome, to know that they're loved. You know, it's hard enough being a child. We have to do everything we can, any support services they need. We need to be there for them, all of Hoboken students.
All right, Cindy?
All of our students should feel comfortable. We care about all our students, and every student deserves one very important thing, and that's the same quality of education. I personally send my kids to a school that has service learning, learner-centered education, and social justice in its mission.
Thank you. Donna?
Yes, I believe in age-appropriate education. I believe representation matters. I believe every child should feel comfortable, included, and encouraged to be themselves. I, one lesson that I'll never forget from my second-grade music teacher, she would tell us that we are all wrapping paper, that we are all covered in wrapping paper, and that inside each of us, there is a gift. No matter what, this is what we need to be teaching our children. We are all gifts. We are all, we should all feel included, we should all feel welcome, and this is super important.
Okay, looks like everyone's on the same page, but of course, you could rebut if there is any, yes. Go ahead.
I think this one, I have one rebuttal. Have any of my opponents went down to the housing authority and explained to those parents and those students what you're gonna do to bring diversity, inclusion into our district? I reached out to Dr. Johnson, too, with the whole legislative matter that was going on with diversity, inclusion in the courts, and what they was trying to bring and introduce to this district, and it was a void. And I came to all of you to ask me to support you to discuss diversity, inclusion. Can I have your take on that? Anybody?
Thanks, Pat. Obviously, you guys don't have to answer, but does anyone care to discuss further? All right, Pablo? Here you go.
Nope. Okay. The next question from the audience is on both committees. Dennis Middle School was named for Hoboken's first superintendent. The building we're in right now. In your role as trustee, you work closely with Dr. Johnson, whose duty is to implement and administer policies established by the Board beyond finance. What other active committee will you join where new policy is needed most? Leslie, you're starting first.
I'd love to be on the curriculum committee. As noted, I have a keen interest in children's literacy as well as academic outcomes in math. I believe through our extensive experience with the school district that there is opportunities for growth in that area. But I, I do think that Dr. Johnson's been a, a real asset to the district.
Antonio?
This question about additional committees, correct? So, my particular interest would be in, in infrastructure facilities and long-range planning. There is tremendous amount of evidence that shows the relationship between quality facilities and how children respond to education. My daughter currently often skips breakfast because she just goes to school. She knows that lunch is going to be at circa 10:30 a.m. She has had a wonderful elementary experience at Connors Elementary, yet at the same time knowing that there was many facilities that could not be provided. No science labs, no art facilities. And these are the result of, again, supply and demand. This problem is not going to be solved without having this as a broad, broad and engaged conversation in our community. That's another particular interest for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
Definitely wanted, you know, sit in on the curriculum committee once more. You know, I, I believe we can continue that we need to improve our district. We would not be doing our best by our students if we did not progress. We need to continue investment, enhance collaboration between teachers and administrators. We need to continue investment, enhance collaboration between teachers and administrators, and enhance the partnership with the community. With that being done, we will continue to see Hoboken improve and rise to be the preeminent choice here in town.
Thank you. Pablo?
Right, so barring finance, being a CPA, I think facilities is also a natural fit. I think we really do need to look at the numbers regarding space, enrollment, capacity, and make sure that we're using our resources to the fullest. Like I mentioned, I read the auditor reports a year over a year, and yeah, the metrics get restated, the information gets changed based on whoever the auditor is and what read-upon methods they're using. I think there's always definitely room to do analysis over resource allocation, and you know, I do this as my job for many years. I'm licensed in it, and I want to continue giving back with my professional experience to make our community better. Numbers count.
Thank you. Cindy?
I think I could be of benefit to the curriculum committee. I care about kids getting the best preparatory education possible. I have worked with a number of education-related nonprofits, including two focused specifically on literacy, one where I went into schools and helped kids learn how to read. I also work with a nonprofit in New York State that helps provide educational services to homeless families. We have a few dozen homeless families in Hoboken as well, and they have very specific educational and support needs. So I think that and just my general interest and knowledge overall, kind of just liking to learn, can be helpful on that committee.
Thank you. Donna?
First of all, I'll say that when it comes to Dr. Johnson, I think she is someone who is really middle-of-the-road, willing to listen. I commend all of her many accomplishments. She champions programs like Project Lead the Way, and she's offering more AP courses, which I think is amazing. But one thing that really does strike me is that the Hoboken High School, the proficiency in math is eight percent. Our state average is forty-three percent. These kids deserve to come out of high school with proficiencies in reading and in math. We owe that to them. So what can we do in terms of remediation and assessing the academic outcomes preparing these kids for the future?
Thank you. Pat?
The finance committee saw the watch where the money's going, whose pocket is going in. The curriculum committee, with respect to education, I just heard somebody say no, and she mentioned math scores as law. To make sure our students have the right resources, like they give them a computer but no internet, tutoring after school, these things need to be offered. You have some kids that are shy and don't want to come forward to struggle, so I will ensure that they, curriculum, I was running the curriculum committee and the finance committee. With respect to working with Dr. Johnson, I have been in the past for the last three or four years since she came here, so she's very familiar with that.
Thank you. Any rebuttals? Seeing none, John has the next audience question. Okay, great. So this time, we'll start with Antonio. What would you say to Hoboken Board of Education employees on the fence about who they vote for and why should they vote for you?
So I think, as I stated, you know, my experience has been, since I, my daughter started in the public schools, is to engage. I mentioned that I was an officer in two PTOs. That is about community building. That is about bringing teachers, administrators, and parents into building better schools and stronger schools. Extremely proud of the work that we did at Connors Elementary, where we had a very established, multi-generational set of families and new families coming in and bridging the gap. I've also mentioned that I have served on the city zoning board for eight years. This is why it's important. What we are doing here when we are elected, if we are elected, is we have a shared responsibility to the taxpayer. That means understanding the application of state laws in our community. I have over eight years of experience in the space. I hope you'll vote for me.
Can you repeat the question? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
John, repeat the question. Yeah, sorry about that. So what would you say to the Hoboken Board of Education employees on the fence about who they vote for and why they should vote for you? Next is Alex.
Yeah, you know, I have experienced firsthand, as a parent here in the district, the effort, the care, and the professionalism of those working in the public school district. They have not wavered from their commitment or their dedication, and I am here to tell you that I would love to continue supporting you and working together to continue that progress. Thanks.
Thank you. Pablo?
Right, so Rutgers has a proud history of our five-year master's in education program. So many of my classmates and friends have gone through it and become public school teachers. And hearing firsthand from them, the challenges they face, the needs they need, I want to say that we should spare no expense when it comes to supporting our teachers. We have qualified professional teachers who know how to teach. It is not the board of ed's job to try to mingle with that. Instead, we're there to be the wing beneath your wings. If you need office supplies, you need to have them funded. Make sure that your salaries are funded appropriately, making sure that you never have to worry about your personal circumstances when you come to teach our kids. We want to be there to support you and give you anything you need to be effective in your job, whether it's professional development or any other benefit we can provide. We are here for you.
Thank you. Cindy?
I care about teachers. I'm so appreciative of what they do. Their job is not easy. They are professionals. They have to multitask and work with our kids, which we love, but kids can be challenging. So I give, I have nothing but respect for them, and I want to make sure they get all the support and all the resources we need, they need. Not just teachers, but everybody in the BOE who is working towards the goal of making sure that our kids are prepared for an independent future. Of course, we support them. And one thing I can offer is a mind that comes for creative solutions. Again, if they're having challenges, if they're having issues, let's talk about it. How can we solve things in a way we might not have thought of before? We are here to support you. I would be there to support you. I appreciate so much that you come to work every day and are there to educate our children.
Thank you. Donna?
I went to an excellent public education, public school in, one of the best in the state. I have nothing but appreciation for public education. That's exactly why I was so excited when my son started kindergarten at Brant. All I want, that my whole reason for running is to support and champion excellent educational outcomes for our students. I support our teachers wholeheartedly. We need, we do not need a fixed mindset. We need flexibility. We need to engage our community. We need to bring people back together.
Thank you. Pat?
Is that your question, your trick question? You said what we can tell about employees?
Yeah.
Could you repeat the question again?
Okay. What would you say to the Hoboken Board of Education employees on the fence about who to vote for and why should they vote for you?
Okay, I'm a Hoboken Board of Ed employee, and no one should be coerced to who to vote for and who you shouldn't vote for. I said the same thing about the city. You got employees walking on eggshells, and you shouldn't have to. Retaliation is against the law, for the record. And I'm not intimidated by anyone. And I want to say this, kudos to teachers. It took my daughter to be a paraprofessional to see what they go do. I give to the staff from the ones that clean the bathroom, down to the janitors, down to the security guards. You guys do a wonderful job. Sometimes you get under credit. You deserve more credit than that. You are our kids' first line of defense when they come in the school building in the morning. So I would tell everybody, every employee, keep up the good work. Don't be intimidated by dirty politics and scare tactics.
Thanks, Pat. Leslie? Yes, go ahead, Leslie.
Teachers are the most important part of the Hoboken Public School District. It's important to acknowledge that the teachers and staff put themselves at risk and sacrificed themselves for the students and the district during COVID, and we did lose a staff member and also family members of staff. In recognition of that, it's, we have to have a whole plan in terms of not just showing the appreciation, but also addressing the issues at hand. It's important to ensure the district teachers have the support and training necessary to help them teach our children effectively. Aging facilities, lack of space for rooms for art, music, and libraries, lack of parking, other challenges are going to increase the problems in attracting and retaining talented teachers, which are all critical to the district. So I believe that they are important to the district and that the board of ed needs to recognize that.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. Anything further on this topic?
Leave the teachers and employees alone and let them do their jobs. Duty free from politics, no dirty politics.
Okay. Antonio?
I just want to add, there's a lot of talk about, about, you know, loving teachers and so forth. I just want to add that our slate has children in the district schools from kindergarten, excuse me, from elementary school all the way from high school. That is because we are delighted with our teachers and our administrators. We love you, and we trust you with our children, and for that, we thank you.
Okay. Is there anything further on this topic? All right, pass it back to Pete.
Thanks, John. This is a topic that we haven't really discussed here, so I was glad that an audience member has brought on athletic programs, and your answer could be none, or you're content with it, but what should be done to improve the athletic programs? Alex, you're first.
Well, we could start with facilities. You know, my daughter has been lucky enough to participate as a freshman and as a sophomore in volleyball, swimming, and lacrosse. Now, swimming is her passion, and it is sad that at Hoboken, in our community, there is no pool with the same, or sorry, with the correct number of lanes, lanes that they can hold a competition in. It's also shorter than any regulated swimming lane. So to me, facilities is definitely top of the list. We have great coaches. We have great participation, and we have thirsty students that want to excel at these sports and bring pride to the community. So, but they can't do that with limited and aging facilities.
Thank you. Pablo?
Right. I think it's twofold. I agree, there is a facilities need when it comes to athletics, which is why, like I said, I was so disappointed with the way the rollout of the referendum happened. We had an opportunity to really make something great together as a community, but decisions were made that did not involve the community. At the same time, I think we should always consider, you know, funding more coaching, more development, more resources towards athletics. I remember during the referendum, reading an article from a student who said that they didn't have even enough money to fix the volleyball nets or get athletic gear for the soccer team, which I found just unbelievable, but that was the case on the ground. We need to make sure that our resources are going towards athletics because, you know, a big part of the education experience is the extracurriculars, and athletics is something I personally hold dear in my heart. And at the same time, I think that we need to make sure that students from charter schools who want to participate in athletics in the district should be able to participate as well.
Cindy?
I think we should keep offering the athletic opportunities we have and try to expand them as much as possible. Find out ways we can partner with the city or with other surrounding cities to give us some more use of their facilities, if that's feasible. Another thing we can do is just have more spirit around our athletics in the town, promote how, what we have, promote here, promote stuff that in one Hoboken, everybody is cheering for all our teams, and Friday nights, all our city is over at the games.
Donna?
I definitely agree that we need to fix facilities and we need to promote athletics as much as possible. The way that things are going now, we definitely need to fix the problems that are right in front of us. We're talking about broken volleyball nets, but we also have to think long-term. I mean, I've spoken to parents screaming at me that we need a hockey rink, and then another parent screaming at me that he's absolutely sure that we need tennis courts. This is the problem. We need to bring the community together, and we need to come up with a consensus that works for everyone, that works short-term and that works long-term.
Pat?
With a million-year-old mindset, no, we don't need big hockey rinks and all of that. We do have facilities. We need to be able to utilize them, like I simply said. I asked them many times to open up the gyms at night so our kids could play basketball, simple stuff like that. We do have shared services with Stevens Institute. So Mr. Torrey, when you want to go buy an extra swimming lane, take your kids down to Stevens Institute. I think looking to share services with Union City, Bryant Stack would be more than that. We walk in, we can do shared services to bring more, and open up our own facilities too, so our kids can use the athletic.
Thank you, Pat. Leslie?
Again, I think facilities are a critical issue here, as well as coaching staff. My children have definitely been the beneficiary of athletic programs down to the third grade, including the third-grade basketball program, which was partnered with the City Rec Sports, which was really phenomenal program. They're looking at adding a cross-country program through the middle school and potentially down to elementary school. These athletics build self-confidence and are very good for discipline for students. I think they should be invested in wholeheartedly.
Thank you. And finally, Antonio?
So, you know, I hate to harp on this, but it is about facilities, and I must admit it, it feels a little weary to hear about, you know, the referendum over and over again when that is, you know, ancient history from ten months ago and that is past us. The purpose of the hockey rink discussion was that was supposed to be a net benefit to the school and potentially a revenue maker. But let me talk about my personal experience. My daughter has found three things she loves in the school. She loves choir, she loves band, and she loves swimming. And that swimming component, like Alex mentioned, sometimes falls out of the traditional things that we invest in, like the big three, basketball, historically baseball, football. We don't have all the facilities to give the opportunities that would allow other kids that have interest in these other sports the ability to participate. Unfortunately, it's going to come back to facilities. Thank you.
Any rebuttals? Pat?
With respect to facilities, they started an enrichment program, too, where they was busing kids out to do our recreational dance and history curriculum, but we couldn't afford it unfortunately with the, with this enrichment program. I guess it was only basically for the rich. So it is good, it's not only about my daughter or my son and what they like to do. Try to put them out of all of it, stay for all of us on a broad perspective, not just only my kids.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Leslie?
It's my understanding that all of the enrichment programs, whether they're after school or otherwise, are all free for children who qualify for the free lunch program or to reduce costs for the children that are eligible for the reduced lunch program. That Dr. Johnson's made a concerted effort to make sure that those programs are available to all children, including the after-school summer programs and weekend programs when they are offered.
Any other rebuttals? Seeing none, I'm going to pass it back over to John for our last audience question before closing statements. All right, guys, the last one. We will start with Pablo. This audience question says, "We have luckily not had any mass shootings at schools here in New Jersey. Why do you think that is, and what do you think our local school district could do to improve our gun safety prevention and safety policies, if anything at all?"
Sorry, can you repeat the question? You didn't hear the first part.
Yeah. "We have luckily not had any mass shootings at schools here in New Jersey. Why do you think that is, and what do you think our local school district could do to improve our gun violence prevention and safety policies, if anything at all?"
Right, and I think it's because of the great legislature we have in New Jersey. We have common sense gun control here in New Jersey. We keep our residents safe because we have legislators who focus on the safety of our residents and our children. I was in Poland in Babelstopp with my fiancee. We saw firsthand what gun violence, war, can do and traumatize children. Literal refugees of war are traumatized for the rest of their lives. We cannot have that here in Hoboken. We have to take an affirmative stance and work with our public safety director, with our city hall, with our police department, to ensure that we, as Hoboken, are protected. Nothing is more paramount than the safety of our children, and I pledge to do everything I can, if elected, as a board of ed member, to pass legislation as a board of ed member to protect our students. Unequivocally, part-staffed.
Thank you very much. Cindy?
Gun safety is extremely important, and we want our kids to be safe when they go to school. That, that's not up for debate. So we absolutely want our schools to be safe from people coming in unannounced or having measures in place so that people cannot come in with guns. Another thing that we as a society can do is address mental health, and a lot of these school shooters have been left from society, and we need an upstream program to try and identify people who are feeling lonely and dejected and would do such horrible, gruesome things. That's not going to solve all the problems, obviously, but it's a, it's a multi-pronged solution. But on the ground, we have to make sure that our schools are safe and that people with guns cannot enter.
Thank you. Donna?
I couldn't agree more. As heartbreaking as it is, I am grateful that my son is aware and actively participates in, in school shooter drills, as, again, as heartbreaking... As, again, as heartbreaking as it is that this has to happen, I am grateful for all of the efforts that we take in our schools to prepare students, to make them aware of the real dangers of what can happen. I believe that we should support and continue to invest in any and all school safety. Our kids need to know that when they enter that building, they are safe and that they are taken care of.
Thank you. Pat?
There's a website I encourage you guys to look at. Enough is enough face kind of look. I joined that organization. I know firsthand being a correctional officer and a juvenile detention officer for three years in the juvie and seven years in corrections. I know the first line of defense when I come here in the morning is to protect their children, staff, and everybody that walk through that door alike. It's really, really hard to say that gun safety, it is a solution for gun safety, because you don't know what lurks in the mind of a criminal. And a criminal not scared no more. I'm sick and tired of hearing about legislation being passed, which will help a little bit, but what about that criminal who don't care about the law? So I, maybe that bothers me too, because I'm going to win, so I ain't gonna be a security guard no more. But I'll still get to my kids. But anyway, with, with respect to gun safety, we do need special workers and we need all of us to work as a community, because you never know when. Nobody's prepared or waiting for gun issues and serious stuff like shootings to happen. So we gotta work together, Louis.
Thanks, Pat. Leslie?
It can happen here in New Jersey. I mean, just last week, there was an active shooter in violent New Jersey down in the south of the state. I think it's important to focus in on it. My slate mates and I have taken the Moms Demand Action Gun Sense Candidate Survey to learn about how Board of Education members can support safe schools and reduce gun violence. And we all earned the Gun Sense Candidate Distinction. Additionally, I was on the Hoboken Public Education Foundation while we raised the money and funded for Rachel's Challenge, which is implemented this year in the schools. It is a social-emotional learning program to increase kindness, reduce bullying, and is proven to reduce violence in schools, including gun violence. It's interesting to note that much of the gun violence is actually self-inflicted, and that social-emotional learning is critical to ensure that our students stay safe. So it is important to comply with state law, but also to support all of our students with their emotional well-being.
Pat, thank you. Antonio?
In addition to what Ms. Norwood just stated, yes, it can happen anywhere. So there are several things in Hoboken that are happening and need to happen in order to be proactive. One of the great things that this school administration has done is introduce social-emotional learning into how teachers interact with children at all levels. Two, we have partnered, I should say, we, the school district, I feel part of it, partnered with HPD to make sure that we have qualified SROs that are in our schools. That are, they're not, they are there specifically to understand students' concerns, understand where there's issues, understand what is potential conflicts, so that we can be proactive. Third, that relationship with HPD is critical, because we need to rely on professionals who understand how to protect our children. That needs to continue.
Right. Alex?
Sadly, it can happen anywhere, and it's happening more often. Thank goodness for common sense gun laws. Thank goodness that Dr. Johnson has measures in place to prevent senseless violence. We as a slate met with Chief Arante, who talked glowingly about the care and investment Dr. Johnson has made into our children's safety. As a parent first, there is nothing more important than our children's safety. I look forward to maintaining and improving the safety in our schools for all of our children.
Thank you. Anything further? Yes?
Right, so, John, as you may know, as you received in the emails, our slate repeatedly wanted to meet with Moms Demand Action, and we wanted to take the pledge. So I just want to reiterate now to Amy and Emily, please meet with us. Let's learn about our organization, and I think we are all glad to support gun safety.
Anything else? Okay, so with that, we're going to close. Thank you, everyone, for staying a little extra. We started a couple minutes later. We stayed a, you know, a few extra minutes, but we'll let everyone close. And we'll start with Cindy. And, yeah, go ahead. And then just, it's a 60 seconds each, and no rebuttals on closing statements. Cindy?
Time's running, ready?
Time's up.
Our lives are full of missed opportunities. So Hoboken, do not let the opportunity to elect candidates who can balance academic outcomes with the cost of living pass you by. This is your chance to vote for transparency. This is your chance to vote for improved educational outcomes for all types of learners. This is your chance to vote to keep what is working and improve what is not. This is your chance to vote for real community engagement, outreach, and unity. This is your chance to vote for a reasonable cost of living. This is your chance to vote for discussion and debate. This is your chance to vote for collaboration and inclusion. And this is your chance to vote for good governance. Finally, this is your chance to put kids first. Hoboken, the status quo does not need to remain. You can have a better, brighter future. Please vote for me, Cindy Wiegand, and the Kids First Slate, 678-I, on the ballot November 8.
Thank you. Donna?
When I think back on what made elementary through high school so wonderful for me, it wasn't the facilities themselves. I, I didn't have an Olympic-sized swimming pool. It was the pride in our educational system, in our teachers, in our after-school programs. I always felt like my town's parents were on the same page, collaborative and nurturing. This trickled down to us kids. Family and community generate successful outcomes. We have to work together as a community and as a city to ensure we're providing all of Hoboken's public school students exemplary educational outcomes. Cohesion is definitely lacking in Hoboken. I'm here because I want to promote an environment of transparency and inclusivity. It is what our children deserve. I will not cherry pick one to be open and honest, because it's not my money that I'm spending. It's your money. The primary and sacred role of the BOE should be education, and I promise that this will be at the forefront of every decision that I should be, if, should I be elected.
Thank you very much. Pat?
Hi, Pathways. I want to say this. I'm going to continue to do what I do for you guys. Wake up Tuesday on the eighth and vote for Pathways, thinking because I'm going to hold dirty politicians accountable. I'm going to continue to serve and make sure for open and our classrooms, the children's, uh, duty-free public school education is my first priority. And I'm going to continue to go to every meeting. And if they don't invite me to their meeting and give me a seat at the table, I will bring a folding chair. I will be there to represent you guys, Pathways. One, I, I stand alone, but stand strong. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Pat. Leslie?
Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, particularly both to Peter and John for moderating tonight's debate. My slate mates and I are the best candidates for BOE, not even looking at our children's 40 years of combined experience in the district schools, our professional experience, or our collective decades of volunteerism in the district schools and in the community. As candidates, we've put the work in. We've attended the New Jersey School Board Association's candidate briefing on the duties and responsibilities of trustees. We've answered every questionnaire briefing sent to us, including those from the Gun Sense Candidate Distinctions relating to the Gun Sense Candidate Distinction and the HEA Teachers Union endorsement. We were the only candidates that did all of these things to prepare to be responsible and knowledgeable trustees. We will support Dr. Johnson, not just with words, but with actions in fulfilling our oversight function. Please support 234 on November 8. And together, we will continue to move the Hoboken Public School District and our entire community forward.
Thank you.
Once again, I thank you for the honor of participating. This campaign has highlighted for me more than ever how important our growing district schools are about making Hoboken the great place that it is. This is not about personalities, but let's be honest, there are values in this campaign. We do have an opposition slate that has had disparaging remarks about NGA representatives and about parents and about investment. Those things are of concern to me. I believe in district schools. I believe in science. And I believe in our schools. I hope you will consider these factors when you vote. On a personal note, my Fitbit told me this morning that I've clocked about 600,000 to 700,000 steps since I began this campaign. And I have met many wonderful supporters who deeply care about the schools and the city. I also met many people who have come to our events with questions or to debate different points of view. I have learned so much. I'm grateful for these conversations. They have made us better. 2-I, 3-I, 4-I.
Thank you. Alex?
Thank you, Peter and John, for moderating tonight. Thank you to our supporters for coming out as well. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time to listen to our answers and for getting to know us better. During my time on the board, we have made tremendous strides in our district. We've introduced over 20 AP classes and STEM-focused education. AP passing scores of three or higher have soared from 4.5 to 59% over the last nine years. Graduation rates have increased over 94%. The class of 2022 earned over $17 million in academic and merit scholarships. Our platform is about transparency, community engagement, and student achievement. Our goal is to make the Hoboken Public School District the preeminent school choice for every family in town. We'd like to hit that goal with your support. Have a good night, and please vote 2-I, 3-I, 4-I on November 8.
Thanks, Alex. And Pablo?
Thank you, John and Peter, for moderating. Always a pleasure. I'd just like to say that I think this year more than ever has shown that the status quo has failed us. We should begin with community input and community feedback, not be backed into it after a two-to-one failed referendum with 20% turnout in the middle of January. We have to support public education, and the way to do that is to get those empty nesters, the young professionals, everyone in town centered around the fact that education is the backbone of our community. We need transparency from the very beginning, not translucency. If we still don't know what is going on in the Board of Ed, it is still a black box. If you elect us, Kids First, 678, we promise you, there will be no more surprises in the middle of the winter. We'll be honest with you from the beginning. We went to bat for you back in January 25. We ask you to do the same for us now. We have your backs, all of you Hoboken. 678, Kids First on November 8.
All right, thank you. Now, a big round of applause for all the candidates. Thank you. Thank you, candidates. We couldn't beat tonight's guy. Remember, folks, Election Day is Tuesday, November 8. Polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Early voting starts tomorrow, October 29, at Hoboken City Hall, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. A big thank you to our sponsors again. El Tavolo di Tommaso, located on 700 Clinton Street. Madison Pizza Lab, located at 152 Newark Street. And Plata Sunblocky, located at 62 Newark Street. Give me one more second, guys, sorry. Go and try each. A special thank you again to the Hoboken Board of Education for use of the Denver Stone Auditorium and sound system. You can watch a repeat of tonight's debate on the Hudson County Facebook page, and a 30-minute highlight reel will be here on next weekend's telecast of the polls with Peter May. I'm humbled and honored to be sitting next to John Highness, and he will leave us with some final words. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, everyone who came out. You know, it's always a pleasure. Hoboken has a special place in my heart. Everyone, the best of luck. Thank you. We're glad we could have seven of the eight candidates. You know, you guys have been a wonderful audience, so all I'm going to say now is bad times don't last, but bad guys do. That's what you need to be, and I need you. Have a great night.
Thanks.